Okay, motion. Motion to go back into public.
Support.
Miss, moved by Ms., uh.
Elzayat.
Elzayat. I mean, I need somebody to motion it. Okay, moved by Ms. Elzayat, supported by Mr. Badun. Thank you. Okay, um, anything else before we end? Oh, we didn't vote yet. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, anything else before we move into the, um, open session, to the regular scheduled, uh, board meeting? We're gonna close out of this and move right into it, okay? All right, ready, Ms. Janoon?
Seven seventeen.
Good evening, uh, and welcome to this evening's, um, Crestwood Board of Education Regular Board Meeting, uh, Monday, May ninth, twenty twenty-two, at seven seventeen. Um, Ms. Janoon, please take role.
Mrs. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Badun.
Here.
Ms. Elzayat.
Here.
Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mr. Sabal.
Here.
And I'm Chairi Alcor.
Thank you. Uh, Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Kaminsky, if you can, um.
Yep.
Ms. Janoon, you can start with the consent agenda, and then if you can just carry on.
Yep, not a problem. So go ahead.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the May ninth, twenty twenty-two board agenda, the minutes from the study session on May, uh, Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two, and the check register for March twenty twenty-two and April twenty twenty-two.
Support.
You know, I did have a question about that. Is that the one where we did the alarm system? Right?
Yeah.
The last alarm system, right? The consent agenda for this? The alarm system where you sent me the breakdown that I asked for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I was wondering, um, going back to change orders. I'm thinking about that, because that's weighing on my mind. Um, I know that they hadn't wa- had a walkthrough. Is there any way that they can actually come through and walk through now? Uh, just to make sure that there are no surprises, because I know you said that there was no walkthrough, and to give them five hundred and whatever thousand dollars is bothering me.
Right, for all three buildings.
Yeah, so can they do that, and then you'll report back to us on that?
Of course.
Okay, so with that, okay.
All right, so, um, I have a motion on the table by Najah, and supported by Mr. Badun. Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the May ninth, twenty twenty-two board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two, the minutes from the regular meeting on May, Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two, and the check register for March twenty twenty-two and April twenty twenty-two. Um, any other comments or questions?
No, just to make sure that we don't follow up on that walkthrough.
And so you'll add a walkthrough, so we'll table the approval of the.
It was already voted on, but.
You already approved the contract, we just put the PO in there.
Got it.
Because you already approved the contract with the company, but I needed to get them a PO.
Okay, thank you.
So that's why it's in the system.
Yeah, but we just want to include that they would like a walkthrough.
Of course.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Hearing none, the motion passes, thank you. Next item is business report. Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Number one, approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve their requisitions per attachment four A one.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion on the table from Mr. Badun, supported by Haas, that the Crestwood Board of Education.
My last name is Sabal, you believed him from earlier, didn't you? Second time, but that's okay, we let the first one go.
You should play the Lotto.
All right, um, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve their requisitions per attachment four A one, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Number, thank you. Number two, approval of confirming purchase orders. The attached confirming purchase orders are items that needed to be processed prior to the board approval. The purchase orders were for items needed for robotics, drama, and food service.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Ms. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment four E two.
Support.
Um.
Pick one.
Sabal.
Okay. So I have a motion on the table by Danielle, supported by Sawa, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment four A two. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone negative? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Number three, approval of cooperative agreement with Livonia Public Schools. Sorry. Each year, the Board of Education is asked to renew our annual Cooperative Education Program Agreement for Crestwood School District students to receive career technical education services at the Livonia Career Technical Center. The payment for services amounts of reflects amount reflects the state foundation allowance for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Cooperative Educational Program Agreement for the Livonia Career Technical Center for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, see attachment four A three.
Support.
Mrs. Elzayat. Supported it, so I have a motion on the table from Mr. Sabal, supported by Mrs. Elzayat, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Cooperative Education Program Agreement for the Livonia Career Technical Center for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, see attachment four A three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Number four, resolution for local district vote on Wayne Risa budget. Michigan law, under section three eighty-six twenty-four of the revised school code, requires each constituent school board of Wayne Risa to participate in the Wayne Risa budget development process, not later than June first of each year. Each local school board must review the proposed budget, adopt a board resolution expressing its support for or disapproval of the proposed changes the constituent district board recommends on the budget. The Wayne Risa Board is then obligated to consider the specific objections and proposed changes. Attached is a copy of the preliminary twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Wayne Risa budget for your review, and a model resolution to be adopted by the board. Upon review of this document and seeing no objections to its content, the administration is recommending that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution supporting Wayne Risa's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three general fund operating budget.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Badun.
Madam Vice Chair, sorry. I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Wayne Risa General Fund Operating Budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, and the Secretary of the Board submits a copy of this resolution to the Secretary of the Wayne Risa Board of Education, see attachment four A four.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion on the table by Mr. Badun, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Wayne Risa General Fund Operating Budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, and the Secretary of the Board submits a copy of this resolution to the Secretary of the Wayne Risa Board of Education, see attachment four A four. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Number five, approval of gym facilities use agreement. University of Michigan Dearborn has requested to utilize the Crestwood High School gym for three weeks during the summer for their basketball camp. The partnership provides an excellent opportunity for our student athletes and builds stronger ties within the community. The agreement has been attached for your review.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the facility use agreement with University of Michigan Dearborn, see attachment four A five.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion on the table by Mrs. Elzayat, supported by Mrs. Janoon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the facility use agreement with the University of Michigan Dearborn, see attachment four A five. Any discussion? Madam? Yes. Oh, go ahead. Mr. Sabal.
Mr. Sabal.
With this agreement, and, I mean, I didn't go to A five yet, but, um, who covers facility cost for that timeframe? Um, like, and who's here, like, for the school, for maintenance? And is there, and I agree, this is a very good benefit, you know, between the students and the community, but, um, is there financial gain for the school, is the first question? And two, um, who covers the actual cost while they are here to have open, cleaned, watched, supervised, whatever?
It actually happens during the normal day in the summer, so our custodial staff will be here, and our maintenance staff will be on site, because it is during the day hours. In addition, they're paying us thirty-five dollars a day.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Sabal.
First and foremost, I want to welcome Maya Bearcat back to the court that she grew up on, and, and one newcomer of the year, by the way, University of Michigan Dearborn. That's a plug for her dad, who told me that this week. Second thing is, um, from an insurance perspective, this is really their camp.
Correct, it's their program, therefore.
If anybody gets hurt on the premises, do they have an insurance rider from the university?
Yes.
Is that applicable?
They have to provide us an insurance rider, so that.
And I love the fact that there's a, uh, a cooperative agreement with the local universities, hopefully colleges, whoever, because at the end of the day, that's where a lot of these kids are gonna go. For them to come back and do this is just phenomenal. I hope our girls at the high school and junior high, hopefully, can take part in it, so, great job.
All I want to say is, uh, this is a great effort, uh, to be community oriented, because I know that this is something that we've been really wanting, is to have the community involved in these functions and not put so much retake to make it difficult for them to come in and be a part of our facilities. So, no, I think this is a, a great thing happening.
Just waiting till we get the turf.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Number six, award of Kinlock Elementary Edition Projects. On March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Crestwood Administration issued an, an RFB for, in addition to Kinlock Elementary. A mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on March twenty-second, and sealed bids were submitted on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The districts received the bids from five companies for the Kinlock project. Post-bid interviews were conducted, references were contacted, and the bid submissions were reviewed and evaluated. The Crestwood Administration would like to recommend that KEO and Associates be awarded the Kinlock Elementary Edition Project. The bid for the project was two million eight hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education award KEO and Associates the Kinlock Elementary Edition Project.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion on the table by Mrs. Elzayat, supported by Mr. Badun, that the Crestwood Board of Education award KEO and Associates the Kinlock Elementary Edition Project. Any discussion?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Fawaz.
So in this contract and the next three coming up, um, when it is written, um, timelines, penalties, all that will be included?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you very much.
Number seven, award of Hillcrest Elementary Edition Projects. On March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Crestwood Administration issued an RFB for, in addition to Hillcrest Elementary. A mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on March twenty-second, and sealed bids were submitted on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The district received bids from five companies for Hillcrest Project. Post-bid interviews were conducted, references were contacted, and the bid submissions were reviewed and evaluated. The Crestwood Administration would like to recommend that Axiom Construction Services Group, LLC, be awarded the Hillcrest Elementary Edition Project. The di- bid for the project was two million four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education award Axiom Construction Services Group, LLC, the Hillcrest Elementary Edition Project.
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Sabal. I have a motion on the table from Mrs. Elzayat, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education award Axiom Construction Services Group, LLC, the Hillcrest Elementary Edition Project. Are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, aye also, any nays? Motion passes.
Thank you. Number eight, award of Highview Elementary Edition Project. On March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Crestwood Administration issued an RFB for, in addition to Highview Elementary. A mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on March twenty-second, and sealed sealed bids were submitted on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The district received bids from five companies for the Highview project. Post-bid interviews were conducted, references were contacted, and the bid submissions were reviewed and evaluated. The Crestwood Administration would like to recommend that Axiom Construction Services Group, LLC, be awarded the Highview Elementary Edition Project. The bid for the project was two million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education award Axiom Construction Services Group, LLC, the Highview Elementary Edition Project.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion on the table from Mr. Badun, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education award Axiom Construction Services, LLC, the Highview Elementary Edition Project. Is there any discussion? Yes. Mrs. Elzayat.
I just wanted to say that I'm so excited we're finally at this process, uh, in the project. Thank you to you and your, your, uh, your staff for getting this done. Penny, thank you. Thanks, that, this is exciting, actually.
Thank you.
I agree. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, that concludes my report for tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to the personnel report, please.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
So our first action item tonight is the appointment of a lunch monitor, Ms. Sandra Kelly for Hillcrest Elementary School. Ms. Kelly is looking to keep busy for a few hours during the day, and is looking forward to spending that time with elementary students as a lunch monitor at Hillcrest Elementary.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Badun.
I recommend, uh, I would like to make a recommendation that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Sandra Kelly as a lunch monitor for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, according to the Food Service Employee Contract Pay Grade One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment five A one.
Support.
Thank you. Um, I have a motion on the tables by Mr. Badun, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Sandra Kelly as lunch monitor for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, according to the Food Service Employee Contract Pay Grade One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment five A one. Is there any discussion?
Comment?
Yes.
I just want to thank Ms. Kelly and others who, uh, want to come back and, and really kind of give back. I know it's not about the money.
Right.
You know, I, every time I go into those elementary schools, like, in March when I went to Reed, the smiles on those kids' faces, just, they will brighten your day, so she's, she's very lucky, and I'm, I'm glad she's doing this.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, thank you.
Okay, our second action item is the appointment of a lunch monitor, Ms. Norfouzi for Kinlock Elementary. Ms. Norfouzi has been subbing as a lunch monitor at Kinlock Elementary. After subbing as a lunch monitor, she has decided to join our food service team officially. Mrs. Fouzi is excited to be on the Kinlock team as a permanent lunch monitor.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Sabal.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Norfouzi as a lunch monitor for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, according to Food Service Employee Contract Pay Grade One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment five A two.
Support.
Okay, Mrs. Fawaz, thank you. Um, I have a motion by Mr. Sabal, supported by Mrs. Fawaz, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Noir Fawaz as a lunch monitor for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, according to Food Service Employee Contract Pay Grade One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment five A two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, our third action item is also for an appointment of a lunch monitor, Ms. Nadia Mukhalid for Highview Elementary. Ms. Mukhalid is a parent who has been volunteering her time monitoring students during lunch. She's now excited to be starting employment at Highview Elementary as a lunch monitor.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mrs. Fawaz.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Nadia Mukhalid as a lunch monitor for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, according to the Food Service Employee Contract Pay Grade One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment five A three.
Support.
Okay, um, Mr. Sabal. So I have a motion by Mrs. Fawaz, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Nadia Mukhalid as a lunch monitor for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, according to Food Service Employee Contract Pay Grade One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, please see attachment five A three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, our fourth action item tonight is the appointment of a lunch monitor, Ms. Rafah Al-Mohsin for Hillcrest Elementary. Ms. Al-Mohsin is looking to keep busy for a few hours during the day. She was recommended, um, by the Access Employment and Training due to her involvement with student activities and volunteer work. Uh, Ms. Al-Mohsin is excited to be starting employment at Hillcrest Elementary.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabal.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Rafah Al-Mohsin as a local mentor for the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, according to Food Service Employee Contract Pay Grade One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment five A four.
Support.
Okay, um, I have a motion by Mr. Sabal, and supported by Mrs. Janoon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Rafah Al-Mohsin as a lunch monitor for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, according to the Food Service Employee Contract Pay Grade One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment five A four. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I love the fact that we were working with organizations like Access and other nonprofits for the employment and training, and we're giving them options. This is fantastic. So I just want to give you kudos, Ms., Dr. Lazar.
I agree. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you.
So the common theme here has been looking to keep busy for a few hours, so if anybody else out there wants to, the weather's getting nice, the more hands, the merrier at that, at, during those lunch hours. Um, our fifth action item tonight is the appointment of a GSRP relief aide, Ms. Elham Al-Kishin. Uh, Ms. Al-Kishin has worked as a substitute paraprofessional for the Crestwood School District. She's fluent in English and Arabic, and enjoys working to support students.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mrs. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Elham Al-Kishin as a relief aide for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, according to the contract. Step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment five A five.
Support.
Okay, um, was it Mrs. Fawaz? Sorry, it's so hard, you guys.
Either one.
I spoke too early, didn't I?
Thank you. Um, I have a motion by Mrs. Elzayat, that the Crest, and, supported by Mrs. Fawaz, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Elham Al-Kishin as a relief aide for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, according to contract step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment five A five. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Our sixth item for tonight is, for the approval of unpaid leave of absence for Ms. Suzanne Badun. Ms. Badun from Riverside Middle School is requesting unpaid leave for the period of May twentieth, twenty twenty-two through August twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the unpaid leave for Suzanne Badun from twenty, May twentieth, twenty twenty-two through August twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-two.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion from Mr. Sabal, supported by Mrs. Elzayat, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the unpaid leave for Suzanne Badun for May twentieth, twenty twenty-two through August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Any discussion? Is she a teacher?
Mm-hmm.
What does she teach?
Eighth grade, English. Math.
Thank you. So will we need to get a replacement sub, or do we have someone available?
We have someone available.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
The last action item for tonight is the approval of a letter of understanding. Um, due to the challenges in recruitment of staff to teach summer school programs for this year, we are requesting an increase in the hourly pay for summer school for this year only, to support the success of our students in these programs.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the letter of understanding with regard to summer school pay for the summer of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, see attachment five A seven. Support.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Sabal, supported by Mr. Badun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the letter of understanding with regard to summer school pay for summers of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, see attachment five A seven. Excuse me, is there any discussion?
Um, how many hours, I'm sorry, Ms. Kaminsky, how many hours a day is that? We're not going all day, right?
No, um, it, I think the teachers are coming in from eight to eleven-thirty.
It's different at the different buildings.
Yeah, uh, depending on, on the building, but it's, it's roughly.
About three hours a day?
Roughly four hours a day.
The high school is five.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're running two sessions, because it's credit recovery.
Okay, so, but the students are there, two and a half hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two hours.
Mrs. Mrs. Elzayat, sorry. Um, I just, when we say hourly increase in hourly pay, what, what's the increase?
So the, the contractual rate is forty dollars an hour, and, um, I thought it wasn't yet, it's going to fifty.
It was in the.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Sometimes, uh, like, the public.
All right, Mr. Sabal.
I was just gonna say, it's very common, I'm here in other districts, it's just, to your point earlier, Dr. Mousalem, it's just so hard to find teachers.
Yep.
And to, to do this for kids who need it in the summer. Thank you to the teachers that are giving up parts of their summer to do this, I mean, it's only, I think it's the way of the future, too.
Agreed.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next item, superintendent report.
All right, thank you, uh, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Chair, this board. So I have no action items, so I just have some informational items. First, um, I want to, you know, May ninth to, May thirteenth was Educator Teacher Appreciation Week. I know we were off three days for the Eid, um, but, uh, I want to, you know, at, here at the meeting, state to all our educators, thank you. Um, as I mentioned in the letter, thank you for all you do, seen and not seen. Um, and sometimes that's what we tend to forget, is there's so much that our teachers do that is unseen. And a lot of times, we don't know what our teachers are doing until someone tells us, did you know that so-and-so called me, or did this, or did that? So I want to thank the teachers. Um, these last three years have been out of the ordinary, the struggle during the pandemic, the struggles that they had at home, but also coming out of the pandemic, you know, the struggles that many of our teachers faced. Um, and I want to say, uh, thank you to all the educators that looked the stress eye-to-eye, and stuck their, to the, to what they do, and continue to give our students. So thank you. Um, I know, thanks, you know, I wish I, there was more I could do than just thank you, but please know that we, we do thank you for all you do. Also, coming off that week, um, you know, I want to, uh, you know, celebrate everyone who recently, uh, celebrated Passover, um, Eid, as, as well as, um, Easter. Um, we are a very diverse community, and that diversity really makes us who we are. So, uh, I want to thank everyone for all of your well wishes to all during that time. I want to, you know, give a huge shout-out to the Chargers Robotics. shout out to the Chargers Robotics.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, you know, it was, it was the last minute. They, they were selected to go to Nationals, you know, so that the Chargers Robotics, and they won the Engineering Inspiration Award at the Michigan State Championships, which qualified them for the first Robotics World Championship in Houston, Texas. And they competed at the Robotics World Championship April 20th through 23rd. Just to be there and the experiences that the students had. I want to thank Mr. Mayor Beas. I want to thank Mrs. Morgan for working together to, to get everything situated so that the kids could, you know, get there and we could fund it. There will be a, like, there's something coming out where we're going to be asking for donations from the community, you know, to help us with some of these expenses. It'll be coming out very soon. But I want to say that, you know, between the fundraising Robotics did, the monies we set aside, we just, we want to refill their coffers a little bit because, you know, that national championship was something we didn't want to take away from them. So we're working with one of our, what it's called, All Points, that we use in the food services. What's it called?
My Payments.
Oh, My Payments. Yeah. There's a program we use in our food services called My Payments. So we're going to be putting something together as a push out to the community if anybody would like to donate a dollar, $2, 50 cents, it doesn't matter, so that we can help rebuild and restock the coffers of the robotics team. But thankfully, they, they had enough money plus we had some funds set aside so that we wouldn't take this event away from our children. So congratulations to Charger Robotics and the team. I also want to add to that, that we were officially notified again, two years in a row, that the teachers in the Crestwood School District were nominated and won. Kristen, remind me of the, the.
Best teachers, best, everybody in the district.
Best teachers in the area. So there's a pressing, it's a Press and Guide event. They, they put out for survey and people can vote for who has the best teachers. And Crestwood won again year two in a row as a school district.
We already knew that, but we.
Yeah, another round of applause.
That's nice.
So there will be an article coming out in the Press and Guide very soon congratulating our teachers. And again, I'm very proud to serve with, with these teachers in our community. Wayne County Youth Commission is something that is being promoted. Again, we're promoting youth representation and community involvement in Wayne County, bringing awareness to and advocating for reforms regarding gun violence prevention and mental health issues. So we're hoping to have more of our students join that Wayne County Health, Wayne County Youth Commission to represent our Crestwood School District and to be spearheading projects in the future. So we're working directly with Wayne County on that.
How, how does that work? Do they contact, how do they, how are we notifying the students?
So the, the counselors in the high school and the principal are identifying students who they feel, and they're also sending it out to students that would like to volunteer. So they're in the process of working on that now. So hopefully, we'll have more information on that as time comes. Because when we put this together, it was when we got the news of it. Just as an update, we have our Wayne County Health Department Immunization Clinic. The date has changed. So the new date is May 20th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Riverside Middle School. Again, the date has changed. We received word today or the day before after this was published.
That's for the second booster?
This is for basically everything. Everything. Anything you want.
Including the third, right?
Including the third. May 20th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Riverside Middle School. Again, I want to thank the Wayne County Health Department, Trustee Elzayat for supporting this. And again, we're here to support the community. It's, it's, you know, all about the whole child. And important events coming up. We've got the NHS induction ceremony in May 14th. Our seniors will have their prom May 20th. Senior finals, May 25th and May 26th. Senior graduation rehearsal, June 2nd. Honors night, June 2nd. Graduation, June 4th. Hopefully not, but if we need to have a rain date, it'll be June 6th. The school will be sending out some information to parents very soon if they have not done so already. Riverside Middle School, important end of the year dates. Riverside Middle School Honors Program will be June 8th for 5th grade at 9:00 a.m., June 8th, 6th grade at 1:00 p.m., June 9th, 7th grade at 1:00 p.m. The 8th grade honors and promotion, we're splitting it up between last names because of size and ability, availability. So June 8th, the last names A through E at 6:00 p.m. and then June 9th, last names F through Z at 6:00 p.m.
You should do A by themselves.
That's a good point. That's a very good point. That's a very good point.
That's what I always encounter.
Yep. That's a very good point.
B, I think, was very good.
No, it's the A's. Fazis.
And then the next social media parent meeting will be May 12th. Parenting and adolescent, setting limits and boundaries with the child. And again, they're, they're recorded on YouTube. So if you can't attend the 1:30 to 3 o'clock meeting, they are on YouTube and you can watch them. Kindergarten roundup, it's that time of year coming around. All elementary schools will have their kindergarten roundup. They're sending out information Wednesday, May 18th at 6:00 p.m.
How is the enrollment looking for that?
I haven't checked. I would have to check with the elementary principals where we're at with that right now.
Are they coming into the board office and registering or do they go directly to the buildings?
No, they're registering at the board office, but I haven't pulled those numbers at this point. And then finally, you know, just want to, you know, Trusty Seba stole my thunder. Thanks. I was at the University of Michigan Dearborn All Sports Banquet and I was honored, and I actually have a picture of Maya Barriquette, who won the newcomer athlete of the year. I mean, from the way it sounds, she dominated on the court, which doesn't surprise me. She's a Charger, so that's all good. So congratulations to Mrs. Barriquette as well as Mr. Barriquette and Mrs. Barriquette, mom. Also, I want to just mention that, you know, as we continue moving forward and we continue to work on the needs of our district, we will continue to update the community on our progress. I'm excited to say that, I'm hoping the community will be excited when they see us breaking ground very soon on our expansion of our three elementaries, the upgrade and expansion on Cherry Hill, which we have to talk about as a board. The name, we're going to give that building because it has to be board determined once we take that over. And also, I'd like the community to know, if you were watching the study session, you heard this, but if you weren't, we are working towards, you know, developing and having done our new athletic facilities this fall. So we're working on it. We're, we got our fingers crossed. And all I can say is it's been a nonstop progression on our end to make sure that we do the best we can for our students. Our community is strong. We're growing and we're going to continue moving forward. So I want to thank the board, thank the community, thank the cabinet, thank everybody. And that's my commentary.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Masalim. And I don't see any people in the audience that have comments for us, so we'll start with board comments. Mr. Seba.
Yeah. First and foremost, I want to wish all of our teachers and our entire staff a very, a happy appreciation week. I can't stress how important you guys are to the fabric of this community beyond just the, you know, eight to three or eight to four that you're here. You're really shaping these children's lives and we thank you for that and we appreciate you. As the old saying goes, if I was king for a day, you know, teachers, firefighters and police officers are the highest paid people in the community, but I'm not. What they bring to the table every single day is just unparalleled. Thank you. Thank you for everything that you do. I'm excited for the expansion. Thank you guys for all the hard work you put into that. But I think we all need to realize that there's just so much more that we need to do. When I said Band-Aid earlier, this is not a Band-Aid, right? This is a little more. But the biggest project is really bringing our school district where it belongs. And Dr. Masalim, you sent something out not too long ago about our ranking and we are the highest ranked high school in this area, in this entire area. And that is a, you know, compliment to everything that you guys have done with our teachers and with our students. But I think we have got to allow the picture of our, our district and the way we look aesthetically to match what we're doing. And it's, you know, we'll talk about this more in the future, but I have such a passion for this with, with the, you know, the facilities that are just depleted. I'm not even going to say debilitated. They're depleted. And, you know, the fact that we're still talking about a field, when I think we're the only ones in the area that still have a grass field and this is a conversation, the community needs to realize that our children are worth every penny we put into them. So thank you guys for what you're doing. The needle is definitely pointed in the right direction. The only way we're going to go in that direction is the entire community pushing us forward. It will not just be the seven of us. It has to be every single voter in the city standing up and saying that we need to do this for our children. Don't look at just your children now. If you want your grandchildren to go here hopefully one day, that's who we're doing it for. Just, just so much more to come. I'm excited for what we're doing, but even more excited for what's to come. So thank you guys for everything that you're doing.
Thanks. Mr. Baydun.
So I want to start off by saying congratulations to the seniors. Prom is Friday. Please be very careful. Have a lot of fun, definitely, but also, you know, just congratulations and enjoy it. I wish I can go back in time and do it all over again as well. So enjoy it and have fun. Mimic to. Yeah, I'd go to that twice. Mimic to what Mo said, or Mr. Seba said, Teachers Appreciation Week. Definitely, congratulations. I know how much time and effort teachers put in. So thank you. The weather is getting better. A lot of, it's getting darker later. It's the summertime coming up. Lot of kids going to be in the street, you know, hopefully not in the street, but playing outside. Just please be very careful. Lot of construction that's going to be around the schools, right? We're breaking ground soon. The play areas might be sealed off or taped off. Everyone, please be cautious of that. And then also, I want to thank Dr. Masalim for his open door policy. I've received a lot of feedback from parents and also some teachers about your open door policy and saying how you're easy to talk to. The chain of command is there, but yet you always open anyone for comments and questions and concerns. So just wanted to bring that up there and voice the community's comment there. Other than that, that's all I had.
Mrs. Falas.
Okay. So I'm not going to take long. I share Trusty Seba and Trusty Baydun's sentiments. I did want to add another important date only because I know it because my daughter tells me the important date for the 5th grade concert, band concert on May 25th. But other than that, I, I share everyone's sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Janoon.
Same. No, but honestly, I'm, I'm as well. I'm very excited to see where we're going. And I know we always say it, but I think we're actually, we're finally really going to be able to see it. And the expansion and not having to, you know, for those, for that part of it, not having to ask the community for any additional funds, I think, is going to be very helpful when we do have to ask for additional funds. But, you know, it's, like everyone said, it's for the kids and it's for the community. And ultimately, we want people to want to come here. We want to keep, you know, growing the district. So thank you guys for everything that you guys do.
Thank you. Mrs. Berry.
All I want to. I just wanted to say that I'm glad that you were able to look at other options to take some of the burden off the community for now until we get further feedback. So that's a great thing. And hopefully, we get good results from that. We know we need it. And I'm glad that there were alternatives. Thank you.
Mrs. Elzayat.
I just wanted to wish all mothers a Happy Mother's Day. It was yesterday. And also a big shout out to, speaking of mothers, there's a huge senior group that, senior parent group, and they are doing an amazing job planning all this stuff for seniors coming up, especially the all-night party. And I see the work that they're putting in. I personally want to thank them because my daughter's benefiting from a lot of that stuff as she's a senior. So I just wanted to give, yeah, I just wanted to give them a special shout out. And I would like to suggest that at the next meeting, we start with comments on this end of the, of the table.
I agree with you.
Of the table because Mr. Seba gets to steal all the thunder.
I agree.
And of course, everybody else's sentiments, you know, teacher appreciation. We can't thank you guys enough. I'm done. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you. So I have a few things. I was lucky enough to go see the play that was put on by our drama. They put on Chicago. And I go to almost every play and I have for 10 years. And I also go to some neighboring schools plays. And I have to tell you, it was the best production I have seen, hands down. Our kids are beyond talented. It was like going to the Fox to see a professional performance. The entertainment was that caliber. And there were scouts and people from the state that were here that night that actually, you know, look at the kids and what awards they're going to give. So I'm, I'm really optimistic because I think we should take everything. So thank you, Kayla. Also, Saturday was the band flower sale and they had to unfortunately move sites. I don't think they were as successful as they normally are. I know they didn't sell out, but I just wanted to thank the band for all they do and the time and effort they put into that. Robotics had another competition that day, so it was moved to the golf course parking lot. And then I wanted to let the community know, the community that's not here tonight, so I'm on my little soapbox. We do listen. We listened when there was a big group of you here before. And, you know, we really like to have the input because it's really hard to make these kind of decisions without more input. So it is appreciated and welcomed. And I want to thank my fellow board members because I know how time consuming and how much reading we do and everything. So thank you and have a good night, everybody. Motion to adjourn, please. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Or.
Thank you. So I have a motion for Mrs. Elzayat, support from Mr. Seba. Any discussion?
801. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.